...notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided on the notice of May 9th, 2011. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to The Nutley Sun, The Star Ledger, The North Jersey Herald News, and The Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in The Nutley Sun on May 19th, 2011, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for a moment of silence and collect.
... flag in the United States of America and to the great mother for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hold the roll, please.
Mrs. Danz, here. Ms. Flynn? Oh, here, yes.
Yes, here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Ooster?
Here.
Mrs. Svalnava?
Here.
Mr. Kupka?
Here.
Superintendent's report?
Mr. Lasker.
Thank you, Mr. Kupka. Just very quickly, a few updates. One, progress of certain projects. We have a presentation to the Administrative Committee. We're a part of the Senate or the secondary office now possibly for savings when it comes to utilities and that of the Administration Committee, as well as we have the Selecting Solar Consultant coming tomorrow with his colleagues to make sure we can get that process forward. We made a decision on the web host and stuff for that. We saw in briefing, we'll be moving that follow-up meeting coming actually on his current agenda so he can take advantage of being ready to set some serious savings there. As well as we had, just to update again, we did have four different groups in the presentation of the Information System who took most of the day. I want to thank everyone involved, parents, support staff, teachers, administrators, Mr. Levine, making that move forward. At this point in time, we're now up to business. Based on feedback that we've got, we've initially moved to two companies. We already started to set an actual business, including teams of our staff members to districts that are in place to see what we're actually about. Two pieces on Performance Matters. The first is that we're into HESBEN testing now, or class test for testing definitely, at the high school. And what we did was our colleagues at the high school have built two internal HESBEN-like assessments for ninth grade and 10th grade. And we were able to run those assessments through Performance Matters. As they're scored, the sections are scored, we'll have all that data in our new system. It'll be the first internal data that we have. So we will report out to you on the process, but it's going to really empower our teachers to take ownership of that specific data, which fills a bridge for us. It was usually the gap in the hole between eighth grade and 11th grade, where students take another state assessment. You can now bridge that gap with these assessments, so we're looking forward to that. The other piece is within Performance Matters to make things more effective for our administrators who are handling the evaluation system. There's a separate component that handles the evaluations. We'll be having a training on that next week. We have a finalizing meeting with Performance Matters to make sure that all of our templates, all of our data are in the system appropriately. That meeting is Wednesday, so we're moving forward with that. Coupled with the evaluations, we make the announcement that while we move the budget meeting to 17, it will still be a half day for students. There's going to be a full day for staff, so we can use that as articulation day specifically for state testing and annual evaluations that we're talking about. Race to the top three again, we were approved for further money. They've extended the deadline and changed some of the requirements for application on the 21st. It's due through the electronic submission system. Ms. Valani and I are making sure that that's running in time fashion. I want to make a comment on programming. We have not canceled or dismantled any programs since I've been here. We've made some scheduling choices that I know got out around the district for whatever reason incorrectly. I'm specific to World Language. Based on student enrollment, selection, and our staffing issues, we offer different courses every year. We are not ready to have dismantling any program. As everyone knows, we're hiring new people in a world language. We're processing that. We're not going to make any substantive changes to program until we have the appropriate administrators involved. So just so that's clear, nothing is on the chopping block, is the phrase that's been thrown at me a number of times. Speaking of that, just an update, we had again over 20 candidates, Ms. Valani and I, as well as key administrators, have narrowed down each of the three pools to about 10. We're starting phone screens tomorrow with the principal position for the high school. And then we'll move on to the director of special services and the coordinator of World Language. Again, with the timeline being the last meeting equal, being able to present candidates in the board so that they can give notice. And with that giving notice, I did want to take this opportunity publicly to recognize that we have a key retirement, and by key, I mean sat in my heart, in that I know over the next couple of months, he happens to be here, so I'm going to take full advantage of the situation. But I know over the next couple of months, we're going to be hearing all sorts of things that tell of the incredible career of a giving person and someone who's been a notable part of this community in this school district for a long time, while I've only known him for eight months, Mr. Colicchio. It's been a great eight months. Thank you very much for your support. And I don't know what it was that I said. But in conversations, obviously, everyone was speaking for myself, wishing you all the best. Thank you for everything you've done, both for me in the last eight months and for this community over the past, you won't say, years.
Yes, we do. There's a lot of room between now and then. Give us a thank. Mr. Lasker. Thank you, Mr. Lasker. I'd like to echo his comments. Mr. Glasser, secretary of court?
I would just like to advise everyone that the budget that was presented at our last board meeting has received full approval from the Executive County Superintendent. It is being published this week in The Nutley Sun, and it can also be found posted on the district's website.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two presentations on the total of studies. Mr. Lasker, we've got two presentations.
Just want to say thank you again to the administrators and teachers who have been involved in this process. This, like the high school program of studies, is a key declaration of the rigor and what we expect for our students when it comes to academic program. Thanks certainly to Ms. Valani, who's been heading initiatives, and to the academic committee who've been supporting them. So without alternative, Ms. Valani.
Good evening. I'm here tonight with the coordinators and the building administrator from the high school, excuse me, to talk to you about our middle school program of studies. As you know, in January, we presented to the board the high school program of studies, which we worked for probably a few months on. Once that project is completed, we then jumped right into creating a middle school program of studies so that we can have some continuity between the high school and the middle school. The process for this program of studies was similar to that which we followed for the high school. The coordinators worked collaboratively with the teachers in their departments and brought that information back to our meetings. The middle school principal and assistant principal worked closely with us as we gathered all the information and put it together. We wanted to make a document that looked similar, but that also maintained the autonomy of the middle school. So that if you look at the middle school program of studies and the high school program of studies, you'll see that the layout is the same, but again, they're very specific to the buildings. During the process, we looked to align them as much as we could. So anywhere that there was a procedure that was seven twelve, we included the same description in bold. But then obviously, where there are differences, they're very specific to the buildings. Our philosophy behind creating the middle school program of studies. First, we want to help students be able to navigate through the middle school. We provided the program of studies a list of various building level procedures, as well as course descriptions for elective courses and required courses. And there's also a section related to forms so that the students and their parents can have access to the elective course description forms and the elective course placement forms that the middle school staff uses. We were looking to create one document that would bring together students from the five elementary schools. We wanted those students and their parents to be able to go to one source and get all the information that they needed going into middle school regardless of the elementary school they came from. So regardless of what information they were hearing from as they were moving up from sixth grade, they have one source to go to, to gather information. And finally, we were looking for a tool to assist with scheduling decisions. We were looking for, again, one place for parents and students to go to get the information that they needed, both for required courses and the number of elective courses that are at the middle school. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. DeVillio. She's going to talk briefly about scheduling and grading parameters.
As Ms. Valani said, we're looking for continuity between the high school and the middle school. The course levels will be established by teacher input, as well as an assessment that the students are taking. And when it comes to level changes, just like the high school, there is a course level change form in the POS towards the end. And any course level change will be made in conjunction with the principal, the teacher, the parents, the students, and the student-specific guidance officers. And when it comes to the grading scale, again, for continuity with the high school, we are going with the same grading scale that was approved with the high school POS. As you can see, it's 10-point intervals, and there is no A-plus and no D-minus. All the other letters, B through C, have the pluses and minuses.
One area that came up very often as we were talking over the last couple of months at the middle school was the vector courses. And we've heard everything from how students are placed, how students move between vector and regular courses, what they're doing in the courses, and so on. So one of our major goals for this program of studies was to look at vector assessments, see how we're placing students, if we're doing it effectively, and what we might want to do moving forward to make sure that it's fair and equitable for all students. So first, we wanted to use an assessment to measure eligibility for all students related to vector, not just based upon one criteria, but that we have multiple criteria so that all students have an equal opportunity of getting into a vector course. We wanted to set entry criteria for all vector courses so that it was the same regardless of whether a student was going to be eligible for math, social studies, science, or a language arts vector course, but that the criteria was the same across the board. And also, we wanted to create some kind of tool to gather data on the student. In the past, the grade six teachers provided input as to what students they felt should be in a vector course or should not. But we were looking for something more concrete. We wanted to be able to collect data on students and be able to use that to make informed decisions about where our students were placed in our middle school programs. So we're looking to have a content area assessment, as well as the teacher input, and using those two together to decide where students should fall in their placement in the middle school. To talk more about this are the core content area coordinators, and they're each going to speak briefly to different parts of the process as we work through creating vector assessments and criteria rubric and so forth. So first, I'd like to introduce Ms. Martin to talk about the process that we run.
To begin the process, we really had to ask seventh grade and eighth grade vector teachers what they need to know, or what we need to know to identify these students. So we all agreed that we need an assessment, and we want teacher input as well. So therefore, in each subject area, we need to create an assessment, and we went to the sixth grade teachers to inform them of the process and to get any input from them as well. And then we also constructed a rubric, which where the teacher can give us information regarding each student. And to talk about assessments?
An academic assessment is going to be given in all four of the core academic areas. Math and science have already had some experience implementing these instruments. In the liberal arts, there's a common emphasis on interpreting literary sources, the analysis, and the close reading of documents. So the language arts department and the social studies department are going to work together here in a common assessment that works on those skills, and we hope identifies those students who can succeed at the level we want for a vector course. It is a collaborative effort between the sixth grade teachers and the seventh and eighth grade teachers, looking for the kinds of document skills that they need. And as this is implemented, it will be given at the end of the month of May. Now, it will also always be linked to the common core standards, which are now becoming part of our life in the academic world, and as we seek to implement the skills, the close reading of documents in all the subject areas, and that too will be part of our vector assessment. And now to talk some more is Mr. Bonis about the rubric.
We decided that we had to have a rubric in order to provide teacher feedback, so it's really a teacher feedback tool, if you will. And so I'm going to speak about how it was created. The coordinators brainstormed a list of attributes necessary for participation in the vector program. We came up with nearly 30 different attributes that we thought a vector student should have. Then we narrowed it down into certain categories, and the categories included academic, social, and emotional. At this point, I'd like to say that the students that are coming up into the seventh grade vector program, many of them are very intellectual, but they may lack the maturity needed for the rigors of that particular course. So that was the reason why we wanted to put together a rubric, so that it was very specific. After much discussion of the 30 attributes, we came up with the things that we thought were most important. Maturity was one of them. The student's behavior and comments are consistently at or above age level, and the student is reliable. This is very important for their success in this program. Their presentation, we thought, was a very important part. The student is always able to express and communicate an idea in the classroom setting, and can both explain and defend the concepts. And the idea is linked to the theme or assignment and other relevant concepts. And student can provide graphics and supporting data, so we were looking at those things as well. Work habits. Student will display an initiative and good time management skills. And assignments are completed on time, and students display pride in their work and attention to detail. This is very important, especially as it relates to reading independently. In the vector courses, many times, most times, they're required to read various things on their own, not in class. And collaboration, we felt that that was a very important component, and it is important that the students can work well with each other and assume a leadership role of a group. We encourage them, participation and ideas of others. And we also are looking that the student consistently contributes to the project and displays excellent listening skills. We are putting together this for all four areas, English, math, science, and social studies. And what we're going to be doing is going to the elementary schools with Ms. Wood, our guidance counselor from eighth grade, and she will then help us to conduct an interview of the other teachers. And with the use of the rubric, we will then be able to record exactly where every student is in relationship to these attributes. And with that and the assessment, we will then come up with a decision on whether or not the student will be appropriately placed.
In terms of the rubric, we were looking for a process that would help the teachers provide feedback for us, but we also didn't want to overburden the teachers. At the elementary levels, teachers may teach multiple subjects, so we didn't want them to have to go through and complete a number of rubrics on a number of children. So working with Mr. Colicchio and Ms. DeVillio, we were able to schedule it so that one of the coordinators can go to each of the elementary schools with the middle school team that's going down to gather information, so that they can get the information all at once, and it's not an extra burden on the sixth grade teachers or any other kids that are going on. Thank you. Ms. Martin is going to speak to about two more things. First, she wants to talk to you a little bit about math assessment. In the area of mathematics, we started giving a vector assessment last year, so she's going to talk to you about that, and then she's going to talk to you about this math criteria.
So last year, I began an algebra readiness assessment in grade six, and it identified our Algebra I students for seventh grade, and it was very, very helpful. I've gotten some feedback from the seventh grade Algebra I teachers, and they say that the Algebra I students that were chosen were correctly placed in Algebra I. They're having, you know, they're successful. So that's good, that's working. Now, I'm going to add the rubric to that and incorporate that into my assessment as well. So you'll have an assessment score and a rubric score. And the combined score is what will be used to identify vector students in each subject area. So they will receive a score in each.
We wanted to ensure that students had the opportunity to be eligible for a vector class, either based upon assessment or based upon a teacher rubric. And that's why we're looking to combine scores, so that it's not just one piece of data that we're using to measure the student's ability to be in vector, but that we have multiple criteria for that. We spent most of our time talking about vector assessments this evening because that's going to be the biggest change in the program. This program of studies will be available on the website tomorrow, and so you can look further into that. What we were looking to do with the middle school program of studies is just create consistent procedures for all of our students. As I said, we were looking for one place for them to go to find out any information they may need, course descriptions forms, or procedures for the building. So we now have that document together. We were looking for a source of information for all students and parents. Again, kind of one-stop shopping, so that they're not looking in multiple places, but there's one document for them to go to, to find the information that they need. I'd also just like to take a moment to thank the coordinators for all their work. Again, just like with the high school program of studies, this was a huge undertaking that they completed in a very short period of time. They worked diligently with their teachers during department meetings and at other times to gather the information we needed, and then came back to the group. I'd also like to thank Mrs. DeVillio, Mr. Colicchio, and Ms. Egan for their help in this process. We could not have completed it without them, also. And then finally, again, just like with the high school program of studies, there's an email address, programofstudies@nutleyschools.org. If you have any questions as you go through the program of studies, please feel free to email that email address, and we'll get right back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The question?
The only question I have, Mr. President, is that I'm sure all this information has been submitted down to the parents at some time before you kicked this in, the sixth grade parents going into seventh grade parents?
Good question. Yes.
Yeah. That's the only thing I was talking about. And my other question was, I think I pretty much answered it, this is a pretty big change for our vector students going into vector programs in the seventh grade?
Yes.
From what we have of consistency now?
Yes.
Upsetting change?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, from coming in, it's just phrases like, what makes vector vector? And the fact that we were getting, you know, prior to this year, we're getting different levels, different performances, expectations, and so on, working with the teachers and the coordinators, trying to make it consistent. So it's positive. Upsetting.
Yeah, that's one of the positive comments, because, you know, I've talked about this a lot, my son's going through sixth grade and seventh grade. A form came home in the mail, he wanted to take his vector class assignment form. He really didn't know why he was chosen, how he was chosen, why he was recommended. And we were very lucky, which for social studies, he had Mr. Stoffler, who he loved, so I'll just give Mike a point while we're talking about it. But I think this is a tremendous step forward. I talked about this even going from eighth to ninth, sixth to seventh. I think it's really put in place on how it's going to be done, not just that, you know, the teacher felt that person could do it and they were recommended. So I think it's a great move. I think it's a good step in that direction for the board.
I guess to follow up to what Skidski says, how are the kids, how are the parents being notified about it?
First step was a public presentation. I mean, you need to get the information out to the principals, especially in sixth grade, if you're more difficult. Now, we have a tool, we can get it out there when it's currently.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we want a backpack, of course, unless you are, I don't know.
Again, this is one of those things, once we have a new web house up and running with the parent portal through the SIS, one of the things we looked at, we're going to eliminate paper and backpack. It will be either blasting emails or making sure parents have a regular place to go to in our web.
Yeah, because I don't know if during June, I don't know if you want to meet the parent. Mr. Colicchio has the parent information.
Mr. Lasker, we have a sixth grade parent orientation meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 11th, where invitations have gone out through backpack. A reminder will be going out that Monday, we come back after vacation, and it's been on the middle school website. So parents, we have made the effort to notify, and this presentation will take place regarding vector and everything that goes on. So that's April 11th, Wednesday, 7:00 in the auditorium.
And how many kids presently, like, were sent into the classroom vector classes?
Question?
Approximately, in each department, it varies. I will tell you, sitting in seventh grade vector right now, social studies, there's approximately 100 youngsters. Vector math, which is accelerated algebra, there's approximately 50 youngsters. And then I would say it's probably 75 to 100 in both science and language arts, English, sitting in the vector currently.
Okay, about a third, except for math, which is different.
Mr. President, are we going to use the same procedures then? Because I know maybe they didn't get it back from sixth to seventh, they can go, like my son got more in eighth. Are we going to use the same procedure then to review them between seventh and eighth, and then even as we go forward, or how are we doing them?
That's a process that we're working on at this point. We're looking to have a process in this with incoming seventh graders, because this program of studies isn't there for next year, so it'll be this year, next year's incoming seventh graders, that we need a process for going into that.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much for your contribution. Mr. Lasker, presentation on the school calendar?
On the school calendar, and the board members have seen it, I've had conversations with representatives from pretty much every stakeholder group. I've had the association in the office talking about what we need to really push, promote academic rigor, but also support our staff and the students and the community. As you'll see from the new calendar, we tried to maximize the allowable time built into our contract a year. There are two full days of professional development to start the year off, and there'll be a process for developing what constitutes those days as far as teachers having time in their buildings to make sure that we're getting it set appropriately, as well as time for district work, grade level work, et cetera. The first full day of school, as shown here on the sixth, is a full day of school for students. We go right into the academic year. We try to get rid of those unknown half-day articulation days. I know they were disruptive for parents at times, and we also recognize that trying to get staff together on those days, there's very little time to be productive. We've replaced that with one full day. So if you look in February, you'll see there's an articulation day on the 15th. That'll be a full day for staff, but no school for students. And as for now, this has gone back and forth, but for next year, we've attached that to the break to try and eliminate multiple interruptions in instruction, also allow parents to plan for one extended period of time absence as opposed to more than one. The other full change is that following the last day of school, there will still be a full day for staff. In conversations with administrators, as well as some teachers, with students and the rest, we want to make sure we're pushing academic rigor through the end of the year. It's very difficult to expect teachers to break everything down and create exit school appropriately and efficiently if they have to leave the same day as the students. And so by doing this, it allows for staff to come back, for administrators to make sure that everything is taken care of, and that's everything from the elementary level through the high school, where you're worried about graduation requirements. So if there is not a rush, we can support, we can have closure meetings, share information, and make sure we close out the year on a truly high note with staff. So those are the major challenges. This document will be available tomorrow online, and it's a work improvement this evening.
Any questions?
I know we had some discussion, parents from previous years, regarding high school end-of-year exams, and some saying that, I've got a lot of complaints, people say, I must make you take these exams down with school. Have we addressed anything to that?
Well, as we shared before, we've moved the exam schedule back as far as we can safely back down here, so there's no space between when the students take exams and the actual end of the year. So that students will actually study all the way up to the end of the year, and then the exam schedule will be the last few days of school. So that's automatic, making sure that there's no extra space that students will take some exams in. Any other questions? No, thank you very much. Community reports?
We'll have an administration meeting tomorrow night, and as you probably know, we're still reviewing the policies, and there's quite a few policies that we don't know from all night, and we'll be seeing that off through our phone meetings, nothing more.
And the finance committee will be meeting later in the night. Very good citizens. We've now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak for then once only after all of the speakers wishing to speak on a topic that has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing no one stepping forward, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Dr. Reed, will you move academic resolutions, one, two, and three?
Yes, Mr. President, regarding academic resolutions, one through three, please move as stated.
Sorry. Paul Rolples?
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalera?
Yes.
Mrs. Pizada?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky, will you move administrative resolution number one?
Yes, Mr. President, I have moved the administration resolution number one, school management service plan of 2011, 2012.
Sorry. Discussion? Is anyone called Rolples?
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton? Yes. Ms. Flynn? Yes. Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalera?
Yes.
Mrs. Pizada?
Yes.
Mr. Pizada, will you move finance resolutions one through six, please?
I move finance resolution one, two, six, over.
Sorry. Discussion? You have a discussion?
Oh.
Yes.
On the website, website contract, does it have potential three-year timeframe?
Again, that's, we can't sign more than one-year contract. That's a stupid agreement, we want to make sure the board understood what the company was presenting, no, it's for three years, but you're only improving it for the upcoming year. So it'll be on the agenda this time every year.
And we comply with all of our policies and...
Full process. We did.
Any other discussion? Paul Rolples?
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton? Yes. Ms. Flynn? Yes. Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Cota?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky, will you move personnel revision number one?
Yes, Mr. President, I move personnel revision number one, personal agenda report.
Discussion? Again, I'd like to recognize Mr. Calicchio, who's retiring after significant over the years and years. Any other comments, discussion? Paul Rolples?
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton? Yes. Ms. Flynn? Yes. Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schalera?
Yes.
Mrs. Pizada?
Yes.
Hearing of the citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all sort of related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to state what is required. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
I'm 45, I'm in the face, the spokesperson for the Academy of Medicine Network. I just wanted to, and I'm really glad to be here tonight, thank Mr. Calicchio for everything that he's done for our children for the last thirty-three years, and I can't even get to tell you really how many times we brought cases to him and parents, and they always felt much better after speaking to him, and he's always done everything he can, so thank you. I really do thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
So, I came here to talk to you about something, it's a little silly, it's about my daughter that's in school here, and she's in the grade. There was an exam with her in aftercare program, and it left my husband very unsettled. There was, it happened on Friday, and on Sunday one day, I still haven't heard from anybody, so I called the school, and when I called the school, I realized that my daughter was in a meeting, and it was a staff from the building, and we weren't notified, and I guess I came tonight because I'm concerned, I'm concerned that I read through the presentation from the parents, I read through the presentation from the staff, and I read through the policies, and I think I have to use the first query, but I'm concerned because there doesn't allow for anything parental notifications, and there isn't, doesn't seem like there was anything to address my daughter's fault there, but it was very, there was a huge concern with privacy of the other children. And I really feel strongly that you really need to re-look at this, revisit it, and I think that if you're a child, especially a seventh grader, who has been extremely intimidated by their peers, if you will, I think that the parent should be really advised, even as of any day. I mean, you have your child being brought into a situation where they don't know these adults, they were terrified of the situation that happened, and then have to be mentioned in a room with people they don't know to discuss the situation. And I just wish that my husband and I would at least give them the opportunity to be in the building or in the room. I also thought that this is really important, too. I know that it's different for all levels, from the grand school to most people in high school, and I realize that, you know, these things need to be taken into consideration for their age program, and I just, I really feel that this is something that should definitely be revisited, especially because there are children that have transition issues at such an age. So I want, it was my hope that by coming here that you would all, you know, at some point, take it into consideration and revisit this, because it is a really important thing for our kids, not just, you know, especially at higher level of education. So, thank you.
Thank you. After the meeting, if you just stay back and we'll talk a little bit more. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Now I'll close this portion of the meeting. Any old business? Mrs. Russo?
Yes, regarding the extended week program, I was very happy to see that we added two additional weeks to the summer session, making it a total of six weeks, and something I've been hoping would happen for quite a long time. I was wondering if we could discuss if there's any plans to include the February and April breaks in the coming school year.
Yes, that was initially, initially fact, that we are now looking for a plan to make sure that not only weeks into the two weeks of summer, but looking to make sure that, again, based on minimum thresholds of enrollment, but actually have the information out to parents before the school year starts, that we would be having a extended day for February break as well as...
Thank you, excellent. Parents have been asking for this for many years.
Still be having, surprise to have come.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Any new business?
Mr. President, I'm sure you are aware that as a representative of the Spring Garden School, we've been doing quite a bit of work up there, volunteers, and through the groups and the parents up there. I would appreciate the board members finding time, I know Mr. Rogers stopped by to take a look at the greenhouse and some work that our staff in-house has done, and some materials outside of the staff, which includes the front paving. Mr. Crumatic and the landscaping technique, Commissioner Scott Colley, Frank Stasiel, and our own George Ackerman have been very helpful in revitalizing the greenhouse, and now we're doing something with the outside landscaping. It would, it would be who we ought to stop by and take a look at. Speaking of Mr. Ackerman, I know that he's been here before numerous times to mention some things that he's done, but I think, George, did you just do something with the bowling team again this year?
Yeah, the boys actually finished first in their division again, third year in a row in the SEC, and probably about the seventh year in a row they've done it, so. And this was a totally new team this year, everybody graduated last year, so it's a very big accomplishment for them.
That's good.
All right. Thank you. Any other new business?
I just want, there's a really good program coming up, Ms. DiVillo is running it through the guidance department, it's Five Secrets. I've almost no secrets. Oh, college, correct, right. It's on the same night as the Tricky Try, yeah, but Tricky Try, but I would encourage, I'm gonna still stop by, I'm gonna, we split due yet, I think there's even something else on that. So, it's a busy night, and, but I think it's worthwhile then to really try to encourage people to attend, I mean, there's so many, it's Women's History Month, there's so many good events going on right now, the Bobby Brown, Dr. Noss was an excellent event, we have the, you know, the Tri-And Survivors is doing an event, I mean, Women in Nutley are doing extraordinary things, and I think it'd be great to support, the guidance department is such a great program, and, you know, all our kids are facing things that none of us met a father, basically, when we were younger, so I think we should try to support that.
Thank you. Mr. Rolples?
You know, just at our Rotary luncheon this week, I learned that, you know, we're talking about this classroom, the books in every classroom, the libraries, that our library now, you know, instead of cards and book, but you can actually order books online, and they get delivered to your iPad, and you don't have to pay for them. So I just wanted to bring that up, that maybe that's a resource. I just learned about it because I was at a Rotary meeting, and somebody ordered a book, but I think it's something maybe we should let the students and the, our kids know, that you can actually order a book online and get it onto your notebook, your iPad, or whatever you like. I thought it was really interesting, and I think we should actually probably meet with the regents there, talk about some of these programs, and share that.
Thank you. Any other business? Not, paying motion for...
President, a motion to adjourn?
President, both are, I adjourn.